Okay, we were called to order the regular meeting for the Batavia City Council for Monday, August 6, 2018. I'd ask that you please rise for a brief invocation to be followed by the pledging of allegiance. Tonight, as we mark kind of the middle of the summer season, we are ever thankful for the many opportunities and blessings that have been showered on Batavia. We've certainly had a number of opportunities for the community to enjoy our downtown and enjoy each other and get to know each other and understand the world around us. And certainly, the dinner on the table yesterday on River Street, Farm to Table, was a most memorable event and certainly, I think, continued to help foster Batavia's understanding of itself and each other. We are tonight ever mindful that we have many from our community who are serving in foreign soil in defense of our liberties, and we just ask that a special blessing be showered upon them and all the men and women from our country who are serving us so heavily in the defense of the liberties of the United States of America. As always, we ask for guidance and understanding and direction and vision as we act on the business before us and know that we are here to do what is always in the best interest of the community of Batavia in general. We ask for all these blessings, amen.
Amen.
Alderman Chanset with you, ladies and the pledging of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yes, the city clerk, do please call the roll.
Brown.
Here.
Rizzato.
Here.
Atack.
Here.
Stark.
Here.
Chanset.
Wolf.
Here.
Salvati.
O'Brien.
Here.
Callahan. Meitzler.
Here.
Malley.
Here.
Uer.
Here.
Serun.
Here.
McFadden.
Let the record reflect that eleven of the fourteen elected members of the city council are present at counterforce. We obviously have the necessary form to conduct business. We move then to item number four, which are items to be removed, added, or changed on tonight's agenda. Alderman Atack is Governmental Services Chairman. Do you have anything?
I do not have anything this evening.
Anybody else in the council? All right, then, we move to item number five, which is presentation of the consent agenda. Alderman Atack.
The consent agenda reads as follows: Accept and place on file planned commission minutes for June 6, 2018. May and June 2018 city council financial reports. Approvals: July 27, 2018, payroll in the amount of $910,696.43. Accounts payable check register in the amount of $4,795,293.28. City council minutes for July 16, 2018: Resolution 18-93-R authorizing request for a permit from IDOT for intermittent closure of Route 31 for the 2018 Half Marathon Special Event. I move that we approve the consent agenda as read. Second.
Move Alderman Atack, second of Alderman Stark for the approval of the consent agenda as presented. Any discussion? Kirk, call the roll, please.
Atack, aye. Stark?
Aye.
Chanset?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Uer?
Aye.
Serun?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Rizzato?
Aye.
Motion's approved, eleven yes, no no's, three absent. Okay, moving to item number six, matters from the public for items that are not on the agenda. Do we have anybody this evening? All right, moving then to number seven, we are very honored to have Holly Deigmann from the Batavia Chamber Executive Director here. Holly, we recognize you.
Thank you, Mayor Schelke, and Batavia. I have a couple of comments I would just like to share before I get on to the events that are happening at the chamber. One thing I just wanted to recognize, the efforts of the Community Development Department here at the city of Batavia, they have graciously spent quite a bit of time with me in trying to, I guess, cultivate a great relationship that we can to further economic development within our community. I know with limited resources, they're doing a ton of work, they're getting even more requests, and they're working very hard to honor all of those requests in a timely manner, and I just really appreciate the work that Scott does in that department and all of his staff, so just wanted to make a quick note of that. On Saturday, August 11, Music Matters is having their first summer festival, which is this Saturday, and just wanted to invite everybody down here to the Riverwalk from 9:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. It's the first annual, so please come out and support this great live and local music festival, tons of family entertainment as well, so please come down for that. On August 8, we're having our BC Squared, which is our breakfast networking group at the Comfort Inn in Geneva, that's at 7:30 a.m. On the 10th of August, we have a ribbon cutting for A Step Above Dance Academy. They moved to their new location on Flynn Street and have a beautiful new space there, so please join us for ribbon cutting for them at 4:00 p.m. Then, on August 14, we have our Women in Business Progressive Luncheon at 11:30 a.m. at Eagle Brook. This is one of our largest women in business events. We have partnered with six other local chambers from Oswego, Aurora, St. Charles. We've done a great outreach to them and expect over a hundred people coming in, and a progressive luncheon is that you sit at one table for salad, you move to a next table, and it's kind of like speed dating for nervous networkers, so come on out and join us, just register through the chamber website. Like I said, tons of other chambers involved, so you get to kind of mingle in with other people, not just from here in the Batavia business community. On the 15th, we have Networking It, and unfortunately, this one is not in Batavia, it is at State Street Jewelers in Geneva. They are members of the Batavia Chamber, and they are, their cause of the month is mutual ground, which provides great services to our community and would love to see your support there and us helping fundraise for them, and that's at 5:00 p.m. On August 16, another multi-chamber networking event, we're working with the Tri-City Health Partnership. They're doing a barbecue mixer. If you have not been over to their facility, I would encourage you to do so, they're providing free and sometimes weighted fees for medical and dental services to those in all of our communities, and that's at 4:30 p.m. On the 17th, this isn't a chamber event, but a lot of community support comes together on August 17 for the Bulldog Boosters Corn Boil at Batavia High School, so please join them in support of the upcoming seasons in this school year at 5:00 p.m. at the high school. On August 23, we have our HR programming that we're doing with the Valley Industrial Association, and this one is on onboarding, so if you are going to be hiring in and bringing on new staff, this is an education on how to properly integrate them into your work environment. On August 24, we have a ribbon cutting at Fast Color, they're actually in Aurora, and they are a great contributor actually at the chairman's circle level membership at the chamber, and that is at 12:00 noon. We have tons of, we have a community calendar on our website and also a chamber calendar. Please check out these events for more detail, register for events, and check out what's going on in the community. If you're looking for something to do, check out our website at bataviachamber.org. Any questions for me, any comments? Happy to entertain them. If not, we have a very anxious business person here that wants to speak with you this evening. This is Angela Birchfield. Got an opportunity to introduce her to most of you before the meeting started, but she is with Data Link Associates, and she is a new member of the Batavia Chamber of Commerce. Angela Birchfield.
Thank you for having me today, everyone.
You're welcome.
Mayor Schelke, Ms. Newman, and council members, I appreciate your time and attention this evening. I am Angela Birchfield with Data Link Associates. We are an IT company located on Oswald Avenue here in Batavia for the past 15 years. We provide IT consulting, computer network monitoring and maintenance, IT managed services, and specialize in cybersecurity for small to medium-sized businesses. Mr. Richard Freeling founded Data Link in 1983 and had grown his business on referrals alone for 34 years, with the majority of his clients retaining Data Link services for the past 20 of those years. Approximately one year ago, Richard brought me on to explore business expansion through marketing and sales. We have increased our staff by 30% in that time and expect that growth to continue. We plan to utilize the job board available through the Batavia Chamber of Commerce website to attract qualified local talent as we expand. We are a family company, and our clients have become an extension of our family. When our clients call for computer support, we know their name, recognize the sound of their voice, and are familiar with their environment in order to solve their problem within minutes in most cases. Instead of getting stuck in phone prompts, staying on hold for 30 minutes, only to be connected with an outsourced group technician who explains you need to hang up and dial a different phone number. We realize our level of personalized service is a rarity in the world of technology, and Richard insists we limit growth to the extent that we maintain the intimate connections we've built with our clients. Technology is both a blessing and a curse, I'm sure you will all agree. We need it to work so we can be our most productive and efficient selves in both our personal lives and in our careers, but there is a looming sense of fear and uncertainty surrounding technology that can only be penetrated through education and professional assistance. In the cybercrime climate, if you don't know what to do, it's okay. Don't be embarrassed, but you must be prepared. Saying "I didn't know" or "I'm not good with computers" will not save you from a data breach lawsuit or a catastrophic blow to your company's reputation. It is not a matter of if you will be affected by a cyber attack, it's a matter of when and how crippling that attack will be. Here's a stat for you: 60% of small to medium-sized businesses are not equipped to withstand today's cyber threats and are expected to be out of business within six months of a cyber incident. I have passed out an executive report titled "What Every Business Owner Must Know About Hiring an Honest, Competent, Responsive, and Fairly Priced Computer Consultant." It is a 15-minute read and has an offer for a free network scan for qualified businesses. For those of you watching from home, you are welcome to contact me to request a copy of this report. Again, my name is Angela Birchfield. I can be reached at (630) 406-8969, extension 574, or via email at abirchfield@datalinkmsp.com. Our hours are Monday through Friday, 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., but of course, cyber criminals do not sleep, so our clients are offered an after-hours phone number to reach us in case of emergency. I will close with this: Joining the Batavia Chamber of Commerce has been professionally and personally enriching. I highly recommend anyone who is on the fence to join the chamber and become active in a leads group, meet at the monthly breakfast, and become active in fundraisers and events. You will not be disappointed. Thank you for spending a portion of the evening with me. I am Angela Birchfield with Data Link Associates, where all your technology needs are met. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Does anybody on the council have any questions? Well, I certainly want to certainly welcome you to Batavia. You obviously are providing a service that, as you just well illustrated, is highly in demand, and more and more people are probably going to find a need for your services, so we welcome you to the community and wish you many years of business growth and success, and thank you for your good words about the Batavia Chamber. You spoke very goingly, like I tried to do, but I think you did a better job of it.
Well, thank you, Mayor Schelke, thank you.
Okay, let the record reflect that Alderman Callahan has joined the meeting, so we now have 12 elected officials. Okay, the next thing is a presentation by Dan Hofer, I guess, on the Batavia Historical Society Depot Museum Historic Church Walk. And any other thing you'd like to share with us?
Thank you again for giving me the opportunity. As you know, I represent, as a member of the Board of Directors, the Batavia Historical Society with our partner, the Batavia Park District. We are sponsoring a tour of historic churches, providing a walk through history. The churches will be opening up their doors to visitors to walk through history on September 9. The participating churches are all historic places and represent many firsts for the community as well as their congregations. While each church is proud of its individual history and historic building, the goal of the tour is to highlight the beautiful and architecturally significant interiors and impact these institutions have had on the Batavia community for more than 150 years. The participating downtown churches are Bethany Lutheran, Batavia United Methodist Church, Calvary Episcopal, and the Congregational Church of Batavia. The Historic Church Walk is organized this year as a benefit for our museum expansion project, and it is also in conjunction with the Depot's museum's newest exhibit, Gather and Praise: A History of Batavia's Churches Exhibit, and I really encourage you to stop by the museum and see a lot of the artifacts. It's not just from those four churches, but from a number of different congregations that started in Batavia, may have left Batavia, no longer exist in Batavia, but there are a number of interesting artifacts that are available that we were able to get out of our archives. The exhibit is now open, it started on July 25. So, we also passed out a complimentary church walk ticket for you to go around on that day, September 9. Hopefully, you'll bring somebody else and throw in $15 to help us. We have a business ad program going with this, we have sponsor programs, number of different levels, and we're making some progress with that. I want to thank Chris Kedworth of the city. He's putting up on your website a program about the church walk with pictures and a number of other things. Thank you, Chris, for doing that for us. You also can find the information on our website, thebataviahistoricalsociety.org, for any other information. And that's it.
Thank you, and we certainly encourage everybody to come on down and see those. Those really are very historic buildings, and not only the history of Batavia, but certainly the history of Kane County. You know, there's some interesting international, or national movements involving those churches, certainly the United Methodist with the fact that from 1915 to 1918 Reverend Moon was up there, and Reverend Moon ended up being the grandfather of Buzz Aldrin, who landed on the moon. So, there was a little bit of an interesting US history twist into that whole situation. So, there's a lot of interesting stories and anecdotes about those four churches, and the nice part about the route that, or the program that's been put together, it's all walking distance, within about a two-block radius you can walk to all those churches and really get a really rare glimpse of Batavia history when you consider that the architecture and the dynamics of each one of those buildings was put together mid-1800s in most instances. It speaks well to the commitment that our forefathers had to this community and its religious background, and certainly speaks well to what Batavia has become based on that strong foundation of religion and community involvement that was put forth by those forefathers, and those, these buildings really speak to that, so.
Well, the church that I worship, in Calvary Episcopal, as you know, was built as a wedding present so that John Van Nortryck's daughter could get married in a proper church building, and this was 1884 when that event happened, so as the mayor has pointed out, a number of historic names in the Batavia community and its history are associated with these churches, and of course, they do tremendous work just beyond being historic buildings. Each of the congregations goes out of their way in regards to community service and serving others who are less fortunate than us. The tour is on September 9 from 1 to 4. You can start at the depot or any of the four churches, there'll be refreshments down at the depot. We'll be open, again, bringing people in to see the exhibits, so we hope that you're able to be there. And unfortunately, Mayor, this is not a full talk, as you know, the mayor has spoken at the Batavia Brotherhood Banquet twice, and he showed the root of Monsignor Donovan, and it ends up being in the shape of a cross, and that used to be his walk through the downtown area of the Batavia community. It was always an interesting presentation that the mayor has done, and one more thing, the Batavia Brotherhood Banquet is going to be celebrating its 50th anniversary this year. As far as we know, we are the longest continuing Brotherhood banquet of its sort in the state of Illinois. We know there are other congregations in the state of Illinois that have it at one church, but this is the only one where all of the churches have an opportunity to share in an evening of brotherhood and song and prayer.
So, as long as Dan is kicking historical anecdotes around, I just have to share one about.
I'm not going to get in the contest.
No, no, I want to share one with this church, because this is good. He talked about John Van Nortryck. If you've ever watched the movie 12 Years a Slave, which was quite a movie a couple years ago, there's a line in that movie about the John Van Nortryck that he just talked about, quite literally, in that Mr. Van Nortryck, before he came to Batavia, was an engineer in upstate New York in the 1830s building the Champlain Canal, which connected the St. Lawrence Seaway with Hudson River. And in the movie, this guy who gets, is captured and put into slavery, does something, and the slave owner says to him, "Where did you learn how to do that?" And he says, "I worked for William Van Nortryck on the Champlain Canal," and that's the line in the movie. And then, Mr. Van Nortryck had sons and grandsons, and one of his grandsons is William Van Nortryck, who ended up being a monumental benefactor to the Batavia Historical Society, and this nice pot of money that's been assembled because of trying to do something, as expanding the museum. Much of that money came from an endowment from William Van Nortryck. He lived in New York City, but he used to come back here with some regularity. But a sidebar to William Van Nortryck, the one that gave the money to Batavia, he was, in all truth, one of the real serious monuments men in World War II that went into Germany and Europe after the invasion of Normandy and secured many of the historical artifacts as the war was going on, he and his team. And as you may also remember, there was a movie made about the monuments men several years ago, and I, having known Mr. Van Nortryck many years ago, I can just imagine what he would have said, because in the movie, they changed everybody in the unit's name, so there was, I think he should have probably been one of them that was portrayed, but the names were all got changed, I guess, to protect the innocent or make Hollywood feel good, or whatever they do with that type of thing, but he was one of them. He wrote his own book about that experience called Watch Your Step, which is available at the Batavia Public Library, and I can just imagine what he would be saying about this movie that changed his name, because he wouldn't have taken that one too well. But anyway, he was a big lover in Batavia, and he left the Historical Society a nice slice of cash to help put the museum expansion into movement, so.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
And thank you, council.
All right, the next one is a proclamation for Tri-City Health Partnership Medical and Dental Clinic.
I don't think Ken is here.
That didn't come? Do we have the proclamation? We'll just roll it over to the next meeting? Okay. All right, moving then to item number 10, which is ordinance 18-53, an ordinance amending the official zoning map for PFI, Public Facilities Institutional Development, with planned development overlay district for 303 to 313 East Wilson Street, 14 North Van Buren Street, and 13 through 27 North Prairie Street. In cooperation with our friends, the Batavia Park District is applicant. Who's got this?
You want me to take it?
You can take it.
I'll take it.
Alderman Brown. All right, there's not much to say about this that we don't already all know. This was presented to the Plan Commission, they went through their public, required public carings. Essentially, what it is, is the area on Prairie Street north of Wilson Street where there were a couple houses that they have recently torn down, and they're wishing to put in an expanded parking lot there and improve the existing parking lot that they have, and then also over on the west side of the property, they're wishing to improve the playground area and do some other improvements to that site as well. So, this ordinance would allow for the amending of the official zoning map for public facilities and institutional district with the planned development overlay district, and it is required in order for them to be able to perceive with what I just mentioned, so I'll make a motion that we approve ordinance 18-53.
Second. Moved by Alderman Brown, second by Alderman Meitzler for the approval of ordinance 18-53. Any discussion? Kirk, call the roll.
Brown?
Aye.
Rizzato?
Aye.
Atack?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chanset?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Salvati?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Uer?
Aye.
Serun?
Aye.
McFadden?
Let the record reflect, the vote is 12 yes, no no's, two absent. Motion's approved, ordinance approved. Moving to item 11, which is Resolution 18-95-R authorizing execution of a 2018 street resurfacing contract with Geneva Construction Company in an amount not to exceed $1,154,903. Alderman Wolf, do you have this one?
Yes, I do. This is coming directly to the council due to the fact that we didn't have a Cow meeting last week, and to get this in and get it done before the end of the season, we need to, we needed to bring it directly to council. If anybody has any questions, Rahat is up here. Basically, this is about, almost five miles of city streets will be improved this year through the program. In this program, College, Latham, and Madison will be resurfaced using part of the block grants that we get through Kane County. We've been awarded $58,000 through that for this year. Does anybody have any questions?
Alderman Meitzler?
Just a point of clarification that somebody asked me earlier. Typically, the contingency amounts, this one being 3%?
Because that's the budgeted amount that we have right now. As you can see, the bid price came out a little bit higher than what we anticipated, and it's likely so, the oil price has been going up, you know, the barrel of oil that's been used for asphalt. So, I try to stay within the budget. If we do go over, then we'll definitely come back to the council for an approval. Typically, we try to, we will be staying about 3 to 5%, so that's our base.
Thank you.
Other questions?
Okay, I'll make the motion that we recommend, or that we approve, Resolution 18-95-R authorizing execution of the contract for the 2017 street resurfacing program with Geneva Construction Company for an amount not to exceed $1,154,903, which includes the bid price plus 3% contingency amount.
Second. Moved by Alderman Wolf, second by Alderman O'Brien for the approval of approving the state, would you call it, resolution?
The motor fund fuel.
Motor fuel tax allocation for this project. Any discussion on that? Kirk, call the roll.
Wolf?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Uer?
Aye.
Serun?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Rizzato?
Aye.
Atack?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chanset?
Aye.
Motion's approved, 12 yes, no no's, two absent. Okay, moving to item 12, which is ordinance 18-50, amending Chapter 1, Street and Sidewalks, Title VII, Public Ways and Property of the Batavia Municipal Code. Who's got this one?
You got it? Wait, was it yours? Or was it, it was yours? Government services.
Okay.
Okay, Chapter 1, Title VII of the Batavia Municipal Code provides for the regulation of public streets, alleys, sidewalks, and other public ways within the city, and this chapter was reviewed, as we do periodically with codes, as staff does, by the street and engineering divisions of public works, the police, and legal counsel. And staff has recommended approval of this. Highlights include authorization for temporary closure of a public street for purposes of maintenance or block parties, which we already do, clarification of encroachments that may interfere with the
I mean, Mayor will just need to sign it, yes. So it's the second item.
All right, then the-
Yeah, I think we should take a vote on it, then. This would be adopting the IDOT resolution for appropriation of the $362,713 from the State Motor Fuel Fund. So I'll make that motion.
Second. Moved by Alderman Wolf, second by Alderman O'Brien for the approval of approving the state, would you call it, resolution?
The Motor Fund Fuel-
Motor Fuel Tax Allocation for this project. Any discussion on that? Kirk, call the roll.
Wolf?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Uier?
Aye.
Sarum?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Rizzato?
Aye.
Atak?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chanset?
Aye.
Motion's approved. 12 yes, no no's, two absent. Okay, moving to item 12, which is Ordinance 18-50, amending Chapter 1, Streets and Sidewalks Title VII, Public Ways and Property of the Batavia Municipal Code. Who's got this one?
You got it? Wait, was it yours? Or was it, it was yours?
Government Services.
Alderman Metzler?
Okay. Chapter 1, Title VII of the Batavia Municipal Code provides for the regulation of public streets, alleys, sidewalks, and other public ways within the city. And this chapter was reviewed, as we do periodically with codes, as staff does, by the street and engineering divisions of public works, the police, and legal counsel. And staff has recommended approval of this. Highlights include authorization for temporary closure of a public street for purposes of maintenance or block parties, which we already do, clarification of encroachments that may interfere with the use of public right of ways or sidewalks, including hedges and other plantings, elaboration of barricade requirements, new restrictions on the use of parkways for landscaping in lieu of the typical surf grass, assign and arnie requirements and maintenance responsibilities, and detailed revisions for parades, possessions, and open-air meetings. So I move that we approve Ordinance 18-50 and Ordinance amending Chapter 1, Title VII of the Batavia Municipal Code.
Second. Moved by Alderman Atak, second by Alderman Stark for the approval of Ordinance 18-50, amending Chapter 1 of the Streets and Sidewalks of the Public Ways of the Batavia Municipal Code. Any discussion?
Your Honor, just very briefly.
Alderman Chanset?
Just very briefly. As I mentioned during the meeting, I appreciated the language regarding parades and gatherings where people had unpopular speech. I just appreciated that we're protecting that right for people.
Any other comments? Kirk, call the roll.
Atak?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chanset?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Uier?
Aye.
Sarum?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Rizzato?
Aye.
Motion's approved. 12 yes, no no's, two absent. Moving to 13, which is Resolution 18-92-R, intergovernmental agreement between the City of Batavia and the Batavia Library District. Who's got this one?
I have this. Okay, so this intergovernmental agreement covers all items of allowable usage to create a self-guided tour of Batavia's windmills. This is part Batavia's seeking to produce additional online guide to Batavia Windmill Collection, and we're seeking permission from or agreement with the library to share this. And staff is recommending approval of this agreement so that we can proceed with the development of an online digital collection for the use in tourism, public education, and media outreach. I move that we approve the intergovernmental agreement for the collaborative content sharing of the Windmill City: A Guide to Historic Windmills of Batavia, Illinois, second edition.
Second. Moved by Alderman Atak, second by Alderman Stark for the approval of Resolution 18-92-R. Any discussion? Kirk, call the roll.
Atak?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chanset?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Uier?
Aye.
Sarum?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Rizzato?
Aye.
Atak?
Aye.
Chanset?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chanset?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chanset?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chanset?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Uier?
Aye.
Sarum?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Rizzato?
Aye.
Atak?
Aye.
Chanset?
Aye.
Motion's approved. 12 yes, no no's, two absent. Moving to 13, which is Resolution 18-92-R, intergovernmental agreement between the City of Batavia and the Batavia Library District. Who's got this one?
I have this. Okay, so this intergovernmental agreement covers all items of allowable usage to create a self-guided tour of Batavia's windmills. This is part Batavia's seeking to produce additional online guide to Batavia Windmill Collection, and we're seeking permission from or agreement with the library to share this. And staff is recommending approval of this agreement so that we can proceed with the development of an online digital collection for the use in tourism, public education, and media outreach. I move that we approve the intergovernmental agreement for the collaborative content sharing of the Windmill City: A Guide to Historic Windmills of Batavia, Illinois, second edition.
Second. Moved by Alderman Atak, second by Alderman Stark for the approval of Resolution 18-92-R. Any discussion? Kirk, call the roll.
Atak?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chanset?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Uier?
Aye.
Sarum?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Rizzato?
Aye.
Atak?
Aye.
Chanset?
Aye.
Motion's approved. 12 yes, no no's, two absent. Moving to item 13, which is Resolution 18-92-R, intergovernmental agreement between the City of Batavia and the Batavia Library District. Who's got this one?
You got it? Wait, was it yours? Or was it, it was yours?
Government Services.
Alderman Metzler?
Okay. Chapter 1, Title VII of the Batavia Municipal Code provides for the regulation of public streets, alleys, sidewalks, and other public ways within the city. And this chapter was reviewed, as we do periodically with codes, as staff does, by the street and engineering divisions of public works, the police, and legal counsel. And staff has recommended approval of this. Highlights include authorization for temporary closure of a public street for purposes of maintenance or block parties, which we already do, clarification of encroachments that may interfere with the use of public right of ways or sidewalks, including hedges and other plantings, elaboration of barricade requirements, new restrictions on the use of parkways for landscaping in lieu of the typical surf grass, assign and arnie requirements and maintenance responsibilities, and detailed revisions for parades, possessions, and open-air meetings. So I move that we approve Ordinance 18-50 and Ordinance amending Chapter 1, Title VII of the Batavia Municipal Code.
Second. Moved by Alderman Atak, second by Alderman Stark for the approval of Orderance 18-50, amending Chapter 1 of the Streets and Sidewalks of the Public Ways of the Batavia Municipal Code. Any discussion?
Your Honor, just very briefly.
Alderman Chanset?
Just very briefly. As I mentioned during the meeting, I appreciated the language regarding parades and gatherings where people had unpopular speech. I just appreciated that we're protecting that right for people.
Any other comments? Kirk, call the roll.
Atak?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chanset?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Uier?
Aye.
Sarum?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Rizzato?
Aye.
Atak?
Aye.
Chanset?
Aye.
Stark?
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 Aye.[1383.13] Bicycle Commission is also scheduled for that evening, August 13th, and their meeting starts at 7:00. And the next Plan Commission is scheduled for August 15th, and that starts at 7:00 also. That's all I have.
Okay, any questions? All right, Government Services, Alderman Atack?
Government Services doesn't have anything else for the first two weeks at this time.
Alderman Wolf, City Services?
City Services doesn't have anything on the agendas for the next two weeks, so no report.
Alderman O'Brien, Public Utilities?
Public Utilities has nothing on the agenda for the next coming week.
Okay. We have any other business from the council tonight? All right. Moving to the Mayor's Report. I just got a couple of things I'd like to talk about. One is, as all of you know, I do play a role in Chicago, at the Chicago Metropolitan Agency for Planning, which is the folks that deal out all the federal transportation dollars that come into the region. And as most of you who have been here for a while may remember, over the last several years, we have been applied, we have applied and have been successful in being named as a recipient in three different federal project grants that are going to impact Batavia. Now, the interesting twist of this is, is that the federal funding program that we are currently operating under ends in October of 2020. And so the kind of, the new rule on the street in Chicago is, is that if you're going to do these projects, you've got to get them out on the street, you've got to get them bid, and you've got to get them underway and under construction by October of 2020. Now, the three projects in Batavia that are falling under this, and the way this works is, this is, the project is approximately 80% federally funded, and then the community picks up the 20%. In talking with our finance director, you know, we've been the benefactors of the sales tax that we've been collecting on motor fuel tax, and that hopefully is going to be the major pot of money that will help us pay all this work that we're going to have to do, and not have to try to find some other source, or try to stick it on property tax or anything else. So we're optimistic we can do this. But the projects are, one is the rebuilding of Main Street from Water Street out to Van Nortrick, and that's for about $2.5 million. Another project is rebuilding of South Prairie Street, and this one is a little bit in a limbo or in the discussion, because IDOT is concerned about how close we get to the intersection at Prairie and Wilson, because of all the things that are going on there. Number one, it's a four-way stop at a major interchange in our community, and the whole thing is kind of compromised by the fact that there is a railroad track that goes through two legs of that interchange. So there's a lot of moving parts to that. And I guess it's been suggested to us that we stop this project before we get near that intersection, and that probably that intersection is going to have to be a project of its own under the, maybe the next funding cycle that we will have after 2020. But, so that's out there. So the Prairie Street work is about $1,008,000 is the grant amount that we have received. And most recently, we have gone into partnership with Kane County, and they have applied, and with our partnership, have gotten a federal grant to put a full traffic signal up at the intersection of Deer Path Road and Main Street. And that's going to require, we're having to hurry on that, when the county is in the leadership of that. That's not per se our project, but we are a partner, and we'll be splitting the local match with the county on that one. And there's some issues there, because we had, they had to get in some land acquisition and whatever to square off that intersection and make it right. I know certainly Holy Cross Church has been very interested in that happening, because I think it would be a major beneficiary thing for them. And I know everybody out in Tanglewood, who tells me that's a bad intersection to try to come off of Deer Path Road onto Main Street on, is very encouraging on that. And so we've got these three different federal funding mechanisms coming our way, but we've got to get them all on the street and under construction by 2020. And I just want to commend our staff, because they've been working with me, and, you know, we've had to run up some stuff by IDOT and everything else, to kind of get all these plans prepared and everything drawn, and some of this is underway right now. And certainly, I want to thank County Board Chairman Chris Lawson for his support, and certainly the folks at the Kane County Highway Department, who are our partner in this, or we're, there is, I say, they are the lead agency. So there really are two Batavia projects and a county project that this federal money is going to come into, but the county is the lead agency, as they refer to it in the business in Chicago, on the Deer Path and Main intersection. So we've got that going, and I just wanted to share what I think is good news for Batavia, because certainly if you drive down Main Street today, or South Prairie Street today, you see a lot of need for why we need to rebuild both of those roads and get them into much better shape. And certainly, everybody who lives on the southeast side of Batavia, I would venture to suggest that South Prairie Street is a major avenue, and I'm one of them, that probably travel that thing four or five times a day. And with the coming of school opening up, you don't even need to go there between 8:00 and 9:00 in the morning and get an appreciation of how many people use that thing on an ongoing basis. So I think we're doing some good stuff here, and there's going to be a lot of people that are going to be very pleased when all this gets done. But just so you're all aware, if we come in someday and say we need to pass a motion to move something along, we are under this federal timetable that we have, they've given us permission to have these projects, but the feds want the money spent by, or the project underway by October of 2020. And if we don't have the project underway, they're now having a new process where they take the money off the table, and it goes into a new regional pot where there's new competition to see who's going to get their hands on all the money that doesn't get spent. Because one of the big complaints at the federal level is, is that they come in with multi-millions of dollars in the Chicagoland area, and everybody asks for these projects, and then when push comes to shove, they don't get their engineering done, or their right-of-way acquired, or they don't have their local match. And so suddenly, these projects don't get bid. And so there are some instances where projects have been laying there for many years, and the feds have come to us in Chicago, and I've been in the meetings on this as the chairman of the Council of Mayors. They're saying, no more. We cannot continue to do business like this. If you're going to ask for a project, be prepared to have your money on the table and do it, and get it done, because the Congress is the one that's appropriating it, and they want jobs created, and they want improvements to the transportation system. So we got all this stuff kind of working for us and against us, but hopefully, we're in command of this. But the value of having the local match here, I think, is very imperative and important that we have that. So I got my fingers crossed that we probably got that done, and Peggy's keeping her eye on the money for me, and tells me today she thinks with the sales tax we get off of the gas, and the motor fuel tax, that we're, that's going a long way toward helping us cover ourselves on this. The next thing I wanted to share is, is that we are going to be adding to the city website with the help of Chris, our public relations gentleman, a new thing called Batavia Then and Now. And we're going to start this next week, is this going to be when we're going to unveil this? And what we are going to be doing, we've done a story already with Kane County Connects, which is a computer-generated county website, and they're going to feature this as one of the things that they're going to talk about. And basically, what this is, is there has been, there's a large cachet of old photographs, many of which have never been seen. And many of these photographs were in the possession of William J. Wood, who most of you know Hoover Wood School was partially named after, and he was the town historian for a number of years. And Mr. Wood, people would send him old photographs of Batavia, and he was the town historian. And some of them, he got to the Historical Society Museum, and some of them, he didn't. And when he passed away, he called upon me to kind of help him get, make sure everything got distributed and whatever. So we were able to do that, but I was able then to access all these photographs. And so what Chris is now going to be doing is, he's going out and we're taking pictures of what is at the site today, of what these old pictures show in these old pictures. As an example, we got some great shots of what the Depot Museum site looked like before the Depot Museum was moved on there. So we're going to have that site, and then we're going to show what it is today. So it's going to be a feature of then and now. And Chris is running around, I guess, taking a bunch of pictures of, for the now part of it. And one of them we're going to open up with is the 1958 Chicago, or Saturday Evening Post cover with the ice skating scene of the Batavia Pond, and we're going to show that. And then we've got a scene of the 60th anniversary of that earlier this year that was taken from the fire department ladder truck. So that's going to be another one. But we've got enough pictures, I would suggest, that we're going to keep this thing rolling for, oh, probably the next year, and every week or two, we're going to add about four more pictures to it. So it's going to be something that we're going to kind of encourage people to kind of come back to and look at again, seeing what's going to be the latest additions. But I'll tell you, we got some, we really got some great pictures, and when you put them in a kind of a then-and-now format, you really get a feel for how much change there's been in Batavia in, say, the last 40 years, 50 years of what's happened around here. So we're going to show everybody what really has happened here with kind of the changes in the community, and something that we think will be a very popular feature. Nice part about it is, people, anyplace in the world will be able to go onto the city website. If they used to live here 30 years ago, they, somebody can send them a Facebook message and say, go to the City of Batavia's website and see these new pictures. And I think a lot of people will get a big kick out of this stuff. So we're going to be putting that on, and Chris Cudworth has really stepped up and has been helping me put all this together, and as I say, we've already done some stories about it, so you'll be hearing a lot about it. But I wanted the council to be in on the ground floor that you know what we are going to do with this. And the final thing I'd like to do is ask Chief, Police Chief Dan Yul, if he would come up to the microphone and share with the city council the activities of his department today. And I want him to do this, because I think what he's going to share with you will speak miles about how, number one, a great, good police department we have working for us, and the value of that police department, and why it is virtually a necessity that we keep that department fully manned and staffed and running the way they are, because we did some stuff today that I think will put a lot of people's minds at ease. Chief Yul?
Well, thank you, Mayor. I appreciate that. We did cause a little bit of commotion on the near southeast side this morning around 11:15. One of our officers stopped a car that he recognized from a law enforcement bulletin from another agency, as having possibly been involved in a couple of residential burglaries in our town. As he turned around to stop the vehicle, he subsequently stopped it in the 600 block of Kramer Court off of Cleveland Avenue. When he came to the car, he realized that one of the two occupants he had initially observed in the vehicle was missing. So he alerted other officers that there may be somebody on foot in the area, and continued to speak with the driver of the vehicle. Other officers arrived, myself included, and basically the entirety of the daytime patrol shift. And a subject that also matched the description from the law enforcement bulletin was observed in the 400 block of Webster. The officer tried to stop him verbally, to speak with him. He fled on foot. There was a brief foot pursuit, and he was subsequently taken in custody. We detained both of the subjects, and ultimately, we've gotten a confession and some charges on the male subject that had run from the officer on the scene, and we've linked that to a residential burglary that occurred here in our town, in 900 block of North Forest on Thursday, August 2nd. We also believe that the subject is involved in a number of other burglaries in other communities, so I don't want to release too much information. There will be a press release being issued tomorrow morning, but I think there's another, a number of other municipal agencies that want to speak with him this evening, so I'm going to hold back some of that information. We did receive a number of felony charges, one a Class X for armed violence, and the only reason I mention that is because residential burglary sounds kind of innocuous, well, I mean, other than somebody's coming into your house to burglarize it. But this subject came into the house with an edged weapon, we believe, and therefore there was an enhancement to the charges. So it's so important from a crime prevention perspective for people, I know we put this out last month, and we had a rash of car burglaries and the auto thefts, to keep your doors and your cars locked, keep valuables out of your vehicles. The same thing applies to your homes and your abodes. Keep your garage doors closed when you're inside or outside the house, so people can't access your garage. Most garages in this community are attached nowadays, and they provide ease of access into the residence. In addition to that, one of the things they were doing in these burglaries in the tri-cities and in our town as well, was cutting the screens to climb in a window. Summertime, it's a nice day, people want to keep their windows open and get a breeze through the house, but that is a primary entry point for a residential burglar. They look for those things, and they're driving through the neighborhoods. First-floor windows especially, that are pulled up, and the vent screens are the only things that are prohibited from entering the residence. So we're real happy with the work. Officer Emile Jensen was the one who initially stopped the vehicle.